Danielle McKenzie. Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb. Mark Ham.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Please join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent and docket. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held September 19th, 2022. Item B, approve the minutes of the work-study session held September 6th, 2022. Item C, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held August 9th, 2022. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022, 2023 in the amount of $3,434,987.3.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Yeah.
Or yes. But I am here.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Maybe.
Motion carries. Item three, receive a presentation from EST Engineering Services, providing intersection alternatives for Broadway and Eastern Avenue widening project, and authorize staff to proceed as directed.
Counsel, about four or five months ago, we hired EST Engineering to provide the design for Broadway Avenue from 19th Street to Willow Pine, as well as Eastern Avenue from 19th Street to Broadway. And they've submitted their conceptual design report, and Amanda Newberry is the project manager with EST, and she's here to provide a presentation addressing the different alternatives at 19th and Broadway, and at Eastern and Broadway.
Well, good evening, counsel. I'm Amanda Newberry with EST, and I just wanted to go over a summary of what we've studied for the intersections of Broadway and 19th Street and Broadway and Eastern. We'll start by going over the project limits for the project. We started at the south on Broadway Avenue at Willow Pine, and went north to the intersection with 19th Street and Tower. And then on Eastern, we went from just south of 19th Street through the intersection with Eastern. That 19th Street intersection is in a different project with the City of Moore, so that one's not in our study. Those two orange circles are highlighting the two intersections that we developed multiple concepts for, to kind of come up with the best alternative for what we would provide on this project. So we'll start by looking at the existing conditions for Broadway Tower and 19th Street. As you can see, the south leg has a skew, so it's coming in, not at a 90-degree perpendicular to 19th Street. It comes in at about 42 degrees. So that's less than desirable. So we looked at a few alternatives here. The first one, we looked at just widening the existing. The task of our project was to go to a four-lane or a five-lane section for the project limits, so each of these alternatives widen Broadway or widen Eastern to at least four lanes. In this case, Broadway is widened to a five-lane section, and we're showing that we would be improving the right turn designated turn from Broadway to 19th Street. We would improve that, otherwise we would just widen. This one took the existing level of service from a C in the AM and a D in the PM to a B in the AM and a C in the PM. So we did see some improvements just from the additional capacity, the addition of left turn lanes. So then the next concept that we looked at was for an intersection reconstruction. This one was the first draft of our Concept Two. We do have a second iteration that I'll show you on the next slide. But this one basically lines Broadway up with where Linda Lane is, and makes that intersection a four-legged intersection with a signal. And then just west of it, the intersection with Tower Drive, we have a three-legged intersection with 19th and Tower. This allows you to get rid of the skewed intersection, and does make it a perpendicular intersection, which is a safer configuration, and has minimal impacts to the surrounding area. So as I mentioned, there was a change there at Linda Lane. In order for the signals to work together and make it seem as if it's a single intersection, and you're less likely to get cars stalled in that center area in between Linda Lane and Tower Drive, with the previous alternative being a four-legged intersection, you allow the left turns to happen at Linda Lane, so you're going to end with cued vehicles in that small section. So this alternative is, we call it 2A, and it just closes Linda Lane. You can see on the screen, there is still a residential street just east of there, and that does connect in. So any residents that live along Linda Lane would be able to go north a short distance and come back out onto 19th Street through the other existing residential. This is the preferred alternative, our engineers recommended alternative for this intersection, but I do have another concept to show you. So the last one that we looked at was, can we improve the skew of the intersection without impacting the business in a way that we would have to take the business and acquire the full business? So this did improve the skewed from a 42 to a 29-degree skew, so it did get better. The Ashtoe Green Book does recommend a 15-degree skew, so we can't quite get there without impacting that business, but it would improve the skew slightly. All of these alternatives were pretty similar in cost and their level of service. For all of the improvement alternatives, got at least to a level of service B. And the level of service for the preferred alternative is that A in the AM and a B in the PM, so that's really good. So I'll move on to the Broadway and Eastern intersection. This one, I'm sure you guys are all familiar. It's very skewed. It's very difficult, if you were on Eastern, to make a right-hand turn and go south on Broadway, and the reverse on the north side of the intersection. This one's very, very difficult for trucks to make that maneuver, and likely they're taking an alternate route at this time. So with this one, we do have a 63-degree existing skew, and we have a close intersection with the southeast 24th Street that we need to accommodate in each of the alternatives. So the first concept that we looked at is a skew correction. So this took that 63-degree skew, and we got it all the way to an 18. In order to do that, we did need to swing Broadway out, which impacts quite a lot of the City of Moore property there. I believe it's a planned park. And then you had to make another connection with southeast 24th, a new connection. So that property's going to look a little bit different with this alternative, but it does have some safety improvements, and does not require a large swing on the right turn for us to have a designated right for it. The next concept is a roundabout, and I will talk through roundabouts. I know they're new to the City of Moore, but we wanted to go over that, and I'll talk about some of the reasons why it would be a good application. But this one kind of has still the same swing out into the park property. It basically moves the intersection north, and utilizes a roundabout to connect those four legs in a safer way than existing conditions. So we wanted to look at minimizing the impact to the park while also not impacting the church, and that's the Concept Three. Concept Three takes the roundabout and moves it back south to pretty close to where the existing intersection is, and because of the roundabout and the configuration of it, we're able to get those legs of the intersection to tie in and be able to allow that right turn lane. The radius on that roundabout and the previous one is 75, so it's 150-foot in the center of that roundabout. That accommodates trucks. It will require a truck apron to be able to utilize the roundabout for the truck turning movement. This is the preferred engineer's recommendation for this concept. Then we also looked at if we were to maintain as much of Eastern as possible and minimize the impact to the park while still not impacting Silver Star's fenced area. This alternative 3A would allow us to construct a roundabout very similar to the location of the existing intersection. It would minimally impact the park and minimally impact the Silver Star property, but it would take the church. We would need to purchase that property. And the last concept that we looked at for this area is widening the existing. What we have today does not accommodate a right turn, so you can see I've added the right turn designated lane to allow Broadway to swing around and turn onto Eastern, so we would require some right-of-way for that connection. But it does maintain that existing 63-degree skew. This one is honestly not recommended by the engineering, by myself and our company. We just wanted to show you what it looked like. So I know roundabouts are new to the City of Moore, and so I wanted to go over some of the applications, some of the reasons why you might put one in, and also just talk about how with the skew that's there today, and this is one of the main applications. So the last bullet there that says "complex geometry," that is the application where you would put in a roundabout to solve a complex geometry problem, where you've got an intersecting angle less than the desirable. Some other reasons would be high-crash locations, anywhere that you have large traffic delays, and anywhere that you have frequent left-turn movements. So you have a lot of people that are coming up Broadway and turning left onto Eastern. That's a significant movement for this intersection. So this graphic at the bottom kind of just shows how the roundabout would look in a bit of a conceptual way. We would be proposing a multi-lane roundabout, because we are widening to a four-lane, so that we would have signage to allow the drivers to get into the correct lane. And the roundabout works a lot like a normal intersection. If you're wanting to turn right, you need to be in the right-hand lane when you enter the roundabout. If you're wanting to turn left, you need to be in the left-hand lane to enter the roundabout. And if you're wanting to go through, you can use either the right or the left lane to make the through movement and stay on the road that you're currently on. And so that's the way that the striping and the signage would be put up to allow the drivers to know which lanes did what. So some of the improvements that can be made with the applications of roundabouts is the improvement of safety. They promote lower speeds and traffic calming. They reduce conflict points. And then they also meet a wide range of conditions. So you can make them larger to allow higher speeds to accommodate trucks. You can make them smaller to make forced traffic slow down and improve the local area. So the smaller roundabouts would typically be used in more of like a residential neighborhood, or something that you were really wanting to calm the traffic. In this application, we'd want to make that larger so that we were able to still have a reasonable speed going through the roundabout, and we would be able to accommodate trucks. So the graphic at the bottom just shows the number of conflict points. This is comparing, when you have two lanes, so one lane in each direction on a four-legged intersection. That has 32 conflict points. There are 32 different ways that cars can come in contact with each other and crash. The open circles, all the ones in the middle, are ones that you could have head-on collisions during those conflict points. On the right graphic, it shows a single-lane roundabout, and so this is the case of one lane going around the roundabout, and it's reduced to eight. In our application, we would have a four-lane intersection, so that's going to be 56 conflict points instead of 32 that's shown here. And instead of eight that's shown on the single lane, you'd have 24 opportunities for a collision. But in a roundabout, you almost eliminate the possibility of having a head-on collision or a severe crash. The crashes that you see are our side swipe crashes, which are less severe. And so typically, the installation of a roundabout reduces crashes by about 80% from a stop sign condition, and about 30% from a signalized. So it could be an improvement. As part of this project, we also wanted to go through the potential phases that this project may be broken up into, based on funding, based on applications for ACOG funding specifically. There may be up to three phases for this project, so they're highlighted in blue, orange, and green for the three phases that we're considering. Basically, you would be constructing one major intersection at a time if you choose to go forward with a phased construction. I've got some additional information that is included in your packets and was provided to you beforehand that shows you the decision matrix that we went through, which kind of highlights the level of service, and then also the traffic counts. I'd be happy to go over those if you prefer, or open it up to any other questions.
Amanda, on the Broadway and Eastern intersection, the various scenarios, what's the level of service for each of those?
Yes. So on Broadway and Eastern, we have a level of service for the skew correction. Well, for existing, if you do nothing, it goes to a level of service F in the year 2045, FAM, FPM. For Concept One, you improve to a level of service B, in beta. Concept Two, the traditional roundabout, is level of service A. Three and 3A are also level of service A for both the AM and the PM in the year 2045. And then widening of the existing is a level of service B, is in beta, 2045. So the preferred alternative, that was one of the main driving reasons why we selected the preferred alternatives from the engineering perspective, because the costs were very close. So when you're talking about spending dollars for the long term, there wasn't enough difference in cost for us to really say this one's more cost-effective. So we really looked towards the level of service to give us those recommendations.
Was it two or three, Concept Three is what was recommended?
Concept Three, yes, for Broadway and Eastern, and Concept 2A for 19th and Tower.
And I think they're here tonight to get some input from us, so they know how to proceed from here. Is that correct, Brooks?
Yes. Yeah, we want counsel's input on the alternatives that you prefer.
So Concept Three, we would have to take the church on Broadway and Eastern?
Not Concept Three. Concept 3A, we went ahead and shifted. You can see that we moved the roundabout
We don't have it in our packet.
back to where Eastern's very close.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see.
In that in front.
Okay.
You didn't get 3A before the meeting.
Okay, in the original, okay.
Yeah, that one was something that we were asked to add, and so.
And I believe that was emailed to you earlier today, so.
Oh, 3A was?
Yes, I believe so.
I read it, probably.
But three is still your preferred over 3A?
Three, yeah, there's no need to take a business on Alternative Three. Concept Three minimizes the take in the park property. Still is going to be a lot of usable space for development there.
And then 2A, we're shutting down Linda Lane at 19th, and they'd have to go back north.
Yeah, I don't love that.
Yes. There are eight houses before you get to the east-west street that they would go to, so there's eight residences that would need to potentially change their route to go northeast, and then back south again. But it's really not a far distance. I wish that graphic went just a little bit more, so you could see. Sorry about that.
But it's going to increase the traffic through that neighborhood, because all the people are going to have to go, anybody that comes into that neighborhood's going to have to, they can't come just straight out on Eastern, right? They've got to go through the neighborhood to get out. Is that, or my misunderstanding?
So this is at 19th Street at Linda Lane. Right now, there are two parallel residential neighborhood streets that connect at the top. And there are several, there's four consecutive residential streets that all come out on a 19th Street.
Okay.
And so there are eight houses that presumably are going immediately south, trying to get to 19th Street. Those eight would need to go east along that, go north and then east to come back out on the next residential street.
Do they have an option to go out on Tower there?
No.
Tower, solid on the back. There's no entrance, that's for me.
They'd go a little further north to get to Tower.
It's way, way up there, yeah. It's, it's, yes.
So to kind of compare Concept Two, which does not close Linda Lane, and Concept 2A, the major difference is that there's a small area in between Tower Drive and Linda Lane in which you can turn left onto Linda Lane. There, in the peak hour, there's not very many vehicles making that turn, because there's only eight homes over there.
That's what I, yes.
That level of service is going to, because the signals are there, and the way that they're synchronized, the level of service is a level of service B, is in beta. If we close Linda Lane, we're able to get a level of service A in the morning, just because those signals are able to work better together on 19th Street.
I just, I know one of the issues on 19th are all of the entrance and exit points off. I understand that that would probably be in inconvenience for those that live on Linda Lane, but I do kind of like that option.
2A?
Of closing it.
Just give the residents on Linda Lane your telephone number.
Okay.
And if the council would like to, I mean, this is a lot of information, so if the council would like to take this under advisement and digest it, I mean, you're certainly welcome to do that.
I would like to do that, because this is Ward One, and our Ward One council, people aren't here, and I'd like to get their input as well, so. You know, give me a little bit more time to fall in love with the roundabout, which I do not love, but.
I did warm up to it. I didn't like it at first, but I did warm up to it.
I liked the roundabout. Yeah, and I would, just my thoughts on that, I would probably go with what they recommend. I would not be the one of taking out the church.
I agree with that. Yeah, if we don't have to take property, I would prefer not to take property.
Well, and even the way they've got that one positioned, it doesn't eat up that much of the park either, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item four, consider rezoning application number RZ 1024, located in southwest four of Section 28. 10 North, R2W, being north of southeast 34th and east of Sooner Road from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 Suburban Agricultural District. Approve ordinance number 822, application by Stuart Drake. Planning Commission recommended 6-0, and this is in Ward One.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hunt and City Council. This property is located north of southeast 34th Street and east of Sooner Road. The property is currently zoned A1, but it is a size of two acres, and that is a legal non-conforming lot. The property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to construct one home on the property. And being a non-conforming lot, the lot must be brought to compliance with the zoning code prior to development. Therefore, the applicant is requesting A2 Suburban Agricultural District, which is a zoning district that does allow a two-acre lot. The property currently lies outside the city's utility service boundary, and will have private water and sewer until city utilities are available. Access is provided from southeast 34th Street. The site lies in an emerging area for the suburban residential growth. The site is surrounded by RE zoning on the north and the east, and to the south is the planned Hills at Timber Creek residential development. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be open space residential, because A2 uses are considered compliant with the open space residential land use designation, and amendment to the plan is not necessary. Based on the existing surrounding uses, north of 34th Street, and the planned residential subdivision south of southeast 34th Street, the proposed zoning and use of the site is compatible with the surrounding area, and staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So these lots only, these lots are only accessed from 34th?
That's correct.
Okay.
And was there any opposition at the planning commission meeting for this one?
No.
Well, it looks like there's one-acre lots adjacent to it also.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
You call the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Number five, consider rezoning application number RZ 1025, located in northwest four of Section 31. 10 North, R2W, being south of southeast 34th Street and east of South Bryant from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 Suburban Agricultural District. And approve ordinance 1022, application by Vince Dennis. Planning Commission recommended approval 6-0, and this is Ward One.
Thank you. And just a quick clarification. Planning Commission actually recommended denial, six to zero. That is a clerical error that was.
That is a big difference.
That answers a few questions.
Yeah. Apologize about that. This property is located at the corner of southeast 38th Street and Turtle Creek Road in the Turtle Creek neighborhood. The property is currently zoned five acres, is currently five acres, sorry, and it is zoned A1. It is developed with one home. The applicant would like to rezone his property to A2 Suburban Agricultural District to facilitate a lot split for a new home in the future. This property currently has access to an 8-inch public water line. This is for fire protection only. The area does not have access to city sewer, private septic systems, and well services utilized. Access is provided from southeast 38th Street and Turtle Creek Drive. These are both private roads that are maintained by the homeowners association. The subject site is located in a rural neighborhood that was established by a plat of survey. A plat of survey is not subject to a city's platting requirements. It's just a survey document that's prepared and filed at county. However, as lot splits begin to occur, the neighborhood does take on more density without the safety standards that are set forth in the city's subdivision regulations. This is especially important with roadway width and construction standards to accommodate the increase in public safety access that would be necessary with the increased density. Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be open space residential, because A2 uses are considered compliant with the open space residential land use designation, and amendment to the plan is not necessary. This application does seek to increase the densities allowed on just one lot in the Turtle Creek neighborhood, but if approved, it could be assumed that this trend would continue on, and a precedent would be set, which could conceivably double the density of the neighborhood over time. This would not only alter the character of the Turtle Creek neighborhood, but it could also create a neighborhood that lacks these critical public safety safeguards in roadway standards and access standards. For those reasons, staff recommends denial of this application. At the planning commission meeting, there were several residents of the Turtle Creek neighborhood that spoke in opposition to this item. Their main reasoning was that the neighborhood restrictions, covenants and restrictions, mandate five-acre lots, and they don't want to start the trend of going against their HOA covenants and restrictions. For these reasons, and the reasons in the staff report, Planning Commission recommended denial. And I should mention that a protest petition was filed with the city clerk. It does have, it does represent 100% of all the properties within the 300-foot radius of the subject site. I placed a map at your chairs. And the petition did come with an explanation of why they are protesting, and I did forward this to you via email on Friday. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
So the owner wants to split the lot because they want to build another home at some point?
At some point, yes.
Any, did the owner mention how long?
He is here today, yes.
Right. Yeah, we don't have anybody signed up to speak, but if the applicant is here, we'd love to hear from them, and then we can take anybody else. So if you'd want to come up and state your name and your address, and then you have five minutes to speak.
Good evening. I'm Vince Dennis, and I live at 3900 Turtle Creek. When the City of Norman proclaimed all future housing east of Bryant was, Norman proclaimed all future housing, they had to require a 10-acre lot to build on, because they had problems with sewage and water, which we now have problems in Moore. But anyway, so in infinite wisdom, Moore turned around and said, "Everything east of Bryant. Going to be five acres." I've had my attorney check the covenants to make sure that it wasn't a violation of covenants, because I've spent 20 years making sure that I comply. I bought the home about 22 years ago, a minimum five acres. I purchased an unfinished, unlandscaped, 4,000-square-foot home in a subdivision known as Turtle Creek Estates. To the east of me and abutting our property were the three approximately 60-acre cider property were the three approximately 60-acre cider farms, complete with cattle, agricultural. Loved it. Other than chasing cows out of my pond and back through the cider's dilapidated fence, we enjoyed as a result of Moore's zoning parcel requirement, the expected peace and tranquility that all Turtle Creek Estate neighbors enjoy. Over the past 20 years, we completely remodeled the home inside and outlandscaped the entire five acres, investing three times what I initially paid for the property, while at the same time growing our family local businesses which employed local people. I never thought that the city of Moore Council would go against the planning board and the city's proclamation and allow a developer, Hayworth, to come in and put 135 homes on 60 acres right behind me, including taking three of the houses and putting them right up against the fence line so that they had a nice front yard. So now I have three neighbors that are within 100 feet of me. Okay, so this is where I'm, I'm addressing this with you guys. You set a precedent once by turning around and allowing Hayworth to go in there and build a typical housing development where you could throw a rock at your neighbor's house and break their window. That's not what I bought five acres in the subdivision I'm in. I wanted peace and quiet and tranquility. I grew up in New York City. I can tell you about living in congested areas. Okay, so I've come to you to request rezoning my five acres from A1 agricultural to A2 agricultural, which will enable me at some point in time. So I wish, at 74 years old, wanting to live on a one-story house instead of a two-story house, a 3,300-square-foot, single-story, new home, should I wish on two acres on the west end of our property, which will be approximately 700 feet from my nearest neighbor, which is almost double what the neighbor on their other side is. This will leave the existing home on three acres. As the surveyor's plot plan describes, and I've filed with you and the county, the west two acres already has a paved and gated entry off of Turtle Creek. The other house, the existing house on the three acres, has its own gated entry on a cul-de-sac off of 38th Street. And in fact, because my address is 3900 Turtle Creek, but the entrance is on 38th Street, I get, my neighbor called me up, my previous neighbor called me up and say, thanks for the pizza because the next, well, you know what I mean? You can't see my house from the street. I put all kinds of trees on that property and landscaped it. Okay. So we have two existing entrances onto the property, one from two different streets. So I don't need an easement. I don't need any kind of variance. And not only that, but the electric company, the gas company and everything put all that stuff out there on Turtle Creek as well down 38th Street. So even utilities don't have to be moved or provided for. And I'm one of the few homes in the subdivision that has access to both ends of that property without putting in an easement and having it drafted and provided to you guys for your approval. Okay? If you look at the plot plan.
We're at time?
Yeah, I, I know. My, look, you know, again, I'm appealing to you to where the president was set by a previous developer, that you guys went and approved it. I'm only going to agricultural two, requires minimum two acres. I wouldn't worry about my subdivision being overrun with houses because all of these people would have to go through what I did and expense to turn around and get their sub, their five acres approved for subdivision, and they have to put in easements and whatever.
Thank you.
So again, the other thing in that corner of my house is where my well sits. Guess what? It's not even 75 feet from the house behind me. You have sewage in that community over there in cider. Now you're trying to put in a new sewer line down Sunny Lane because there's problems with the sewage. Where's my well? Right up against them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anybody else signed up? Are there others that would like to speak? If you'll just state your name and address, and again, you have five minutes.
Yes, my name's Terry Adell, and I live at 2001 Southeast 38th, on the first lot as you come in on the north side. And like I said in the planning commission, I'm of the, of the camp that most people, when they buy a piece of property, I think they ought to be able to do whatever they want with that property, within reason, with, that's legal. And I have a little bit of a mixed emotion about this, but I also think what's more important is when that, when that addition was plotted, it was plotted to be five acres, before any lot was ever sold, the HOA was established, the restrictions, the covenants were all established, and everybody knew when they bought into there what it was. There's even a paragraph in our founding documents that states that we know that sometimes these rules will be prohibited to some members, and sometimes they will be beneficial to some members. But by buying this property, you commit to this. So I think it's more important than to be able to do what you want with your property. It's more important that you keep your commitment, I think. And that's my object to it. Not because I'm against it. I know it's prohibited to him now, but it stated that in, when he signed into it. My concern is in the future, you start subdividing and subdividing, and we have to maintain our own roads. We have wells. We have septic systems. I just feel it'd be a detriment to the community to start subdividing, and that's why I'm against it. Not any personal reason. It's just that I want to, I would like to see the area stay the way it is.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Courtney Belding. I live at 4,000 Turtle Creek. I am Vince's neighbor to the south. So I'm the new owner, not the one that ate the pizza. So we moved into this neighborhood five years. We're one of the newer members in the neighborhood, and we found it by chance. We didn't know it existed, but when we found it, we fell in love with it. The five acres, the, the small community of everyone knew each other. Everyone was so welcoming. They all came over and spoke to us, welcomed us to the neighborhood. And it was one of the things that we loved because it was, you know, five acres, we could spread out. And we do live right at the front of our neighborhood, at the front of our property. He lives in the back. So where he's proposing to put the new house is literally right next to us. I know that he thinks it's 700 feet and is closer, further than my closer neighbor, which is my other side to my south. The neighbor to my south is well over 700 feet. There's no way I could hit that house with a rock, but I'm pretty sure I could hit where he's wanting to build. And we have talked about this, he and I and my husband. So he is planning to build there on that front lot, and I get it. I feel for him. I have older parents and, and grandparents that I just moved here from Lawton because they're, they're older and they couldn't take care of their property, and they couldn't manage the big house. And so they had to give up that property and move to a smaller one. So I feel for him, but I still, I'm with my neighbors. I want the integrity of our neighborhood to stay the same. I want everyone to remain in their five-acre lots and just preserve the community that we have built there. So nothing personal, just would like it all to stay five acres. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Thoughts, comments from the council? Motion, anything?
So since neither of the Ward One residents or council member are here, and this is such a controversial thing, I, I would like for them to be present to vote on this. And so I would make a motion that we tabled this until our next meeting and then make a decision then. Plus, it gives me the opportunity to do a little more research that I didn't do prior to the meeting, just to kind of help me understand exactly what we're talking about. I would, I've been in the Turtle Creek neighborhood, but it's been years and years ago, and I'd like to go back out there and get a feel for the neighborhood and everything and see, see these lots myself and understand what we're talking about. So that's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. So would, would this be on the next agenda, Brooks?
Yes, October 17th.
October 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seventeen.
October 17th.
Seventeenth.
Two weeks from today.
I appreciate you all coming out, and sorry that you came out and we're tabling it, but we want to, we want the Ward representatives here. So thank you again for coming out this evening, and we'll, we'll revisit this in two weeks.
Okay.
Yes.
Just like this.
No, it'll be just like this.
Yeah, it'll be just like this. So thank you all again for coming out. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
My coffee's a little different than yours, probably.
Okay, item six, consider rezoning application RZ 1026 located in south. Did I skip it?
No, I'm sorry. You're, you're right, you're right.
Okay, sorry.
You're right.
Item six, consider.
Okay. We have to carry on with the meeting, though.
Turtle Creek Road is in my yard.
Okay.
Consider rezoning application number RZ 1026 located in southwest four of section 28, 10 north, R2 west, being north of southeast 4th Street and east of Sooner Road from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 Suburban Agricultural District, and approve ordinance number 1122, application by Jack and Christie Fournay, application, or the Planning Commission approved 6-0, and this is, is also Ward One.
Thank you. This property is located north of southeast 34th Street and east of Sooner Road. The property is currently zoned A1, and it is part of a legal non-conforming lot to the west. In September, the city council approved the applicant's, the same applicant's rezoning request for the property to the south of the site to A2 to be used as a future lot split and home construction. Since that time, the applicant and property owners at 5,001 Southeast 34th Street have agreed to a property swap. I've shown this on exhibit A that is on page 92 of your packet. In order for the applicant to combine the subject site with her own property that was previously rezoned and developed as a residential site, it must be rezoned to A2. The property currently lies outside of the city's utility service boundary, and the site will have a private water and sewer until city utilities become available. Access is provided from southeast 34th Street. The site lies in an emerging area for suburban residential growth. The site is surrounded by RE zoning to the north and west. To the south is the planned Hills at Timber Creek residential development. The Envision More 2040 Plan calls for this location to be open space residential because A2 uses are considered compliant with the open space residential land use designation, and amendment to the plan is not necessary. This application does seek to rezone a small tract of A2 property so that the applicant may attach this, the parcel to their property and develop as a large acreage residential property. Based on the existing surrounding uses, north of 34th Street and the planned residential subdivision south of 34th Street, the proposed zoning and use of the site is compatible with the surrounding area, and staff recommends approval of this application. And again, I would refer you to the, to exhibit A on page 92, which shows how the properties would be split up if this zoning application is approved. And then the following map on page 93 is a location map, and you can see that in September, city council did rezone with rezoning application 1023, the larger parcel to A2, and then the red square is what they are requesting today.
So help, so I've looked at this over and over. So on your exhibit A.
Yes.
The one, the rectangle that says Wilson in it, they, that is one lot. If we approve this tonight, that will be one lot, and then the L shape will be another.
Another lot.
Correct. And the Fournys will be, have the ownership of the L-shaped lot.
Okay.
The Wilsons, who are already out there living today, would retain ownership of the lot that you see here. The lots, or I should say, the property swap was brought about because as they were working with the Wilsons to establish property lines, they, the Wilsons did have some pet burials on what is actually the Fournys' property. And so in order to make that property part of the Wilsons' property, they decided just to do a property swap instead of purchasing additional property. So that's why we're here today. I hope it all makes sense.
Okay. So in the, in the map that's RZ 1026, the, the red square is the, being property swapped for the one that we rezoned, for the little piece of the one that we rezoned in September?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm clear now.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Can you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Number seven, approve the purchase and installation of emergency lights, sirens, and related equipment for 39 police vehicles from Fleet Safety Equipment doing business as Dana Safety Supply in the amount of $422,382.92 using state contract number SW 0142.
Counsel, this item is related to other items on the agenda regarding previously approved purchase of new police vehicles. This is an agenda item asking to purchase related equipment and lighting for the police vehicles, such as cages, pushbars, shea, glass shields, weapons racks, radio consoles, et cetera. I'd recommend approval.
And, and these expenses, I'll ask this one, these expenses were all included in the original.
Yes, sir.
Funding that we approved?
Yes, sir.
The budget, yeah.
There is an item on here that we'll talk about later on that there would be a slight adjustment on.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the radio or the computers, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can you call the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Motion passes. Item eight, approve the purchase of 34 mobile patrol and five unmarked police radios from Motorola Solutions, Inc. in the amount of $237,116.23 using GSA contract number 36273.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item nine, approve the purchase of 34 in-car video systems for marked patrol vehicles from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $191,730 using state contract NASPO OKMA 145010.
Motion to approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 10, approve the purchase of 34 rugged laptop computers for marked patrol vehicles from Dell EMC in the amount of $75,867.26 using state contract number C00000006563. And I understand that there's a change in the amount on this. It should be $76,963.76. So I need a motion to amend this item.
I would make a motion that we amend the item to.
$76,963.76.
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Okay, so?
Make a...
So, now we just need to vote on the amended item.
Make a motion that we approve the item as amended. Second.
Call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Number 11, approve and purchase 34 Decatur G3 radar units for marked police vehicles from Channel Public Safety who submitted the lowest quote in the amount of $73,700.
This is radar units for these vehicles.
Radars. Send to approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item 12, approve the purchase and installation of 32 sets of graphics for marked police vehicles from Boss Print Design in the amount of $43,232 as a sole source provider.
Motion to approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Item 13, receive and approve updates from the city's emergency operations plan. It's emergency management.
Good evening to each of you. The changes, we review the emergency operations plan every year. It is a requirement of our ordinances and our procedures as well as the state. The changes to the EOP this year are mostly simple updates. There's not a lot of substantive policy changes or anything of that nature. You can find a list of the changes on page number four of the document. The, the plan is a, is our city's guide to how we respond to large-scale or larger-scale emergencies and disasters. It describes our authorities and our best practices for managing those events. It is a part of our comprehensive all-hazards emergency management program. You can read most of that in the, in the text. And again, I will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Make a motion that we approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Consent doc, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held September 19th, 2022. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022, 2023 in the amount of $759,192.58.
Motion to approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 15, consider awarding bid number 2023007 for piping material for the southeast, southeast lift station, 36-inch gravity flow sewer main improvement project to Core and Main LP in the amount of $1,345,554 as the lowest best responsible bidder.
Secretarian trustees, about a year ago, we delayed the bid opening for the fourth project with the southeast lift station, which was the 36-inch gravity flow from 34th Street down to the new location just west of Belmar. The idea behind delaying it, manufacturers and suppliers indicated that the prices were through the roof because of Hurricane Ida, which had hit New Orleans, and three of the four major plants that provide resin for pipe material were, had serious damage in, and only one was able to operate for quite a ser, limit, an amount of time. And so, we're now going through that process again. We've received the bids. Item 15 is just for the piping material only. We're bought, the city is buying that separately, not the contractor. And we did only receive the one bid, but we, we feel good about the price, $177 a foot. In talking with the engineer, Satish from Eagle Consultants, he had been talking to manufacturers and suppliers again, and they had indicated that they, we, he thought we would see somewhere around $210 per foot. And we're buying about 7,800 feet. So, with that, they're the, even though they're the only bidder, we would recommend award based on their price and, and the material that we're...
So, with, with all the adjustments that we'll see here, are we still within reason of our original plan? How much over are we, I guess, maybe would be the better question?
Well, I, I would, I would say that we, you know, we're probably about 15%, somewhere in that neighborhood, that we, we're over the original project, 15 to 20%.
Okay.
So, however, it's much better than what the prices that we have been receiving at that time.
Well, and we're thankful that we're in a good time financially, too, where we can absorb some of this, but just wanted to ask the question. I make a motion that we approve.
I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 16, consider awarding bid number 2023006 for the construction of the southeast lift station, 36 gravity flow sewer main improvement project to McKee Utility Contractors, Inc. in the amount of $4,748,000 as the lowest responsible bidder.
Items, this is a companion item to item 15 in that this is for the construction only and installation of the material we just awarded for item 15. We did receive four bids. Three of the bids were above the engineer's estimate of 5 million, and this, the recommended award was below the 5 million, and they're a very responsible contractor. I've done a lot of this type work, and so we would recommend award.
Most to approve. Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item carries. Number 17, consider adopting resolution number 25922 authorizing the application for the American Rescue Act, ARPA grant from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for Water Projects.
Item 17 and 18 are also companion items. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board received $50 million in ARPA funds for water projects and another $50 million for wastewater projects. Item 17 is approving the application of projects for the waterside of the 50 million. A community of our side, size could receive up to $2 million for water projects and $2 million for wastewater projects if we're successful. And the projects that we're recommending on the waterside, I, I must say that it is a 50-50 match, so our, our proportion would be up to $2 million to match the 2 million if we were successful. The three projects that we're recommending on the waterside are a 24-inch pipe across, underneath I-35 on the south side of 34th Street. This would provide a second line connecting the east side of the interstate of our infrastructure, water infrastructure with the, with the west side, in the south pressure zone. We only have one other in the south pressure zone. And so, this would provide a second that would provide some resiliency and some reliability and also help serve the development that we want to occur in the southeast part of Moore. A second project is, that we would be doing as our submittal to the OWRB is the expansion of the Eastern Avenue Pump Station. This would, this is, this would also improve water pressure and reliability to help serve the future development in southeast part of the city. And then the third project would be rehabilitation of the 27th Street West Pump Station, which would help with expansion of our north high zone so that we can provide better pressure in the northwestern part of, of Moore. And with that, we would ask that we, you know, authorize us to proceed with this, these projects for the submittal. The funding source for this would be Fund 11. We, we receive about at one point, that's a 1-8 cents sales tax, we receive approximately about 1.4 million a year from that.
Okay. And so, that's where we would pull our matching funds from.
Pull our matching funds.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Hope we can get all that or some of it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. Item 18, consider adopting resolution number 26022 authorizing the application for the American Rescue Act grant from the Water Resources Board for wastewater projects.
This particular project, the project that we would be submitting for the wastewater side is Project 16 that you approved. It's the $4.7 million project. We do have funding established for that project, but, you know, we still would submit that. I, I do know that the Water Resources Board is, is anxious to spend as much of that ARPA money as quickly as they can. This is a project that's just awarded, it's ready to go, and, and should score pretty well. We'd recommend we do that project and approve the order.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We will now recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Consent doc, item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held September 19th, 2022. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2022, 2023 in the amount of $256,917.77.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second. We can call the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Item passes. We will now recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. New business, citizens forum for items not on the agenda. I don't have anybody signed up to speak. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Item B, items from the city council and trustees. And item C, items from the city and trust manager.
Yes. Last weekend at Central Park, had a farmer's market and had about 2,300 people attend, attendance in a successful event. The big trash pickup is still one week out, so congratulations to Tony Menson and his staff because they've maintained the one week out all summer long, so that's a nice achievement. And then the erosion control in Veterans Park on the east side of the channel, Silver Star has started to mobilize, so that work will begin shortly. So, I have.
Item 21, is executive session, section 307, Title 25 Oklahoma statute permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion, opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss and consider possible action in the City of Moore versus Amanda Properties LLC, case number CV 2021-270-V regarding property acquisition related to the construction and maintenance of the southeast 4th Street Railroad underpass project and authorize staff to proceed as directed in executive session under authorized, as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statute 307B4. Do we have a motion to?
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Have a second?
Second to motion.
Can you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. We are convened to executive session. Yes, we are convened to executive session. We'll reconvene from executive session. Please note that all council members that were present before we, we went to executive session are still present. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that council proceed as directed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. And twenty-two is adjournment.
So moved, second.
Can you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes. Thank you.
Good to see everybody.
All right, you'll have a nice rest of the evening.
All right, see you, Jason.